Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this session of Chris Pamsys Town Council. This evening, I'd like to remind our residents that work continues on the western end of the Vincent Road. As a result of the construction, there will be no access to the Gondola Point Road from Vincent beginning tomorrow. Our crews hope to finish the work by the end of Friday. When Vincent Road reopens, traffic will be limited to one lane of travel, controlled by timed traffic lights and signage. As always, please drive carefully and be mindful of this. Last week, Mayor Grant of Rosay and myself received the first poppies from Legion Number Fifty-Eight President Defazio and Vice President Eisen. Certainly an honor, and I hope that everyone will take time during Remembrance Day this coming next week to take time to remember those who have fallen, those who serve, and for those in the future. Thanks very much. I am looking for approval of the agenda. Just with the light. It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Olson on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. And I went a little bit out of order. I'm sorry about that. I'd like to have the treaty acknowledgement and moment of reflection. Counselor Thompson, would you do that for us?
Thank you, Yourship. We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Chris Pamsys exists on the traditional territory of the Wollistakue, Malasit, and Mikmak people, whose ancestors along Pasmaquoddy tribes signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the seventeen hundreds. We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of this traditional territory. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight. May we make good decisions without prejudice or bias, and always in the best interest of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. I'm looking for any disclosure of interests. There are none. Item number five, presentations. The YMCA of Greater St. John, this evening we have with us Shaila Boucher, President and CEO, and Daniel Doran, Board Chair. Welcome this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Council, for having us. Wish we were there in person, but it doesn't seem to work out that way these days. I'm gonna do most of the presenting, and Dan will fill in any of the gaps that I missed as the Board Chair. And he likes to talk about strategy, so, and as a board should, so I look forward to hearing what he has to say. So, as you know, the Y really plays a role in our region, providing programs and much-needed services from Sussex to St. Stephen. So I really like to commend you. I know you're now part of Envision St. John and focused on our region. And we also focus on the region, but we focus locally as well to see how we can provide more services to local communities and what community needs. And really, sometimes our greatest impacts are in the areas that we can't be seen, such as our rainbows program, which I'll talk a little bit about. So I believe they're gonna put the presentation up for me. If not, I'm ready to go.
Just one second there, Shaila.
So that I don't see two of me on the screen.
There we go. We're good to go.
Thank you. I love this picture, too. It talks to our strategic plan, which I'll get into a little bit later on. So let me start off by telling you all the things that you might not have known about our YMCA. Of course, we always like to talk about who we are. And as you know, we're all a charity. We're a charity, and we've been part of the Greater St. John area for over a hundred sixty-some years. And our mission is true to who we are. If you ever come into any of our facilities, it's that we're there to care for people and really help enrich your lives. That's really important to us, and so I tell my team that. How easy it is. Our vision is, and this is our vision for the next five years, or gets us into twenty twenty-two, is really to be that leader and valued partner in developing healthy and diverse and growing communities. So we're gonna talk a little bit about that today. And you can see the word partner, and that's also why we're presenting today, is because the town has been a partner of ours for a very long time. And then, of course, our values. We're very much a values-driven organization. The staff know these values, understand them, we program to them, and they're really dear and close to my heart as well. And that's, I think, really important to an organization like ours. So who are we? Well, we're a mighty team of three hundred-plus Y staff. And actually, ten percent of our staff come from the Valley, from Chris Pamsys, so we're pretty proud of that, because we have a large location. As you can tell from our beautiful map, we're all over the place, which I'm gonna talk a little bit about, all our different locations. And surprisingly enough, because some people think of the Y as a gym and swim, you may not, because we're in your community as a childcare center. And so we have, our largest part of us are our child care services, which I think we've all learned during the pandemic is definitely an important, essential service. And our Y is committed to growing in that area. Health, membership recreation is the next part. And then our Newcomer Connections, which is a really big team at our Y and keeps growing. And then, of course, you have all of us in the background doing the work that needs to get done. And we can't do our work without our volunteers, so thanks, Dan, for being here. We are very much a volunteer-driven organization, so over eleven thousand hours, which equates to over seven hundred and twenty-nine volunteers working side by side with us.
Shaila, if I may interrupt, we're losing your voice.
Maybe I need to slow down.
No, I can hear you loud and clear now. Thank you.
I will come closer. All right, so next slide. So this just talks a little bit about our reach in the community. Hopefully you can see that okay. So we serve over four hundred and ninety-five children in our twelve after-school sites, and of course, a hundred and ninety-two full-day childcare programs. Our membership is at four thousand, obviously a bit different than it was before pre-pandemic, but we're still holding our own, and we're pretty proud of the two membership centers that we do run. And we, this is a big number, and we surprised a lot of people with this. Newcomer Connections, we serve nine, or two thousand and six hundred clients on an annual basis. And that number can fluctuate depending on what's happening in the various communities around our world. And then, of course, camping is a big part of us, too. So six hundred and twenty-seven camper, overnight campers come spend time with us. And really, over twenty-one thousand people served in twenty twenty. Number can go up as high as over thirty thousand, depending on what's happening in our community at those times. Next slide. I always like to talk about this, because we know quality is so important to the work we do, so, and we've been really clear on the outcomes that we need as YMCA and as a community to deliver in our programs. And so really being consistent and including those quality programs. The Y has its own curriculums, and pretty much everything that we deliver, and we make sure that people are trained and qualified to do the work that they do. Obviously, meaningful connections, so important to the Y, being welcoming and making sure people have somewhere to come and connect. And existing partnerships, so building on new and existing partnerships, we're always looking for that opportunity to do something new and grow into different communities, and we can't do that alone. You can see all our partners, or some of our partners that we list at the bottom of the screen, and really, we need everybody to do the work and to support our community. And investing in our staff, we spend a lot of time making sure that our staff are looked after and they get the development that they need. And then, of course, creating meaningful spaces. Next slide. Health members recreation, we start with that. A lot of you probably know about us, so I'll be brief on this one. And we'll go to the next slide. So we call ourselves HMR. That's our acronym. Everybody in any community has acronyms. And really, this just demonstrates that we're there for all ages and all stages. And we're not only a membership center with fitness equipment, but we do so much more recreational programming, whether it's music programs, or it's playgroups, or whatever, the Y does a little bit of everything. And we've even had it in intergenerational programs, I think we all know, we have an aging community. And there's so much for our young people to gain in intergenerational programs. So we do a little bit of everything. If you wanted to really know everything that we did, you can check out our website. I think there's seven hundred and twenty-some programs on there, so check it out, but I won't go through them all here tonight. Next slide, please. So I'd like to talk about Irving Oil Field House, because that is a very unique partnership for our YMCA, one we entered into many years ago, and they are actually operated by another charity. But we are responsible for every piece of operation that happens in the building, and they're responsible for the asset. So a really cool partnership. And we get to manage it, and we're obviously doing it for the next five years, even in COVID. Hasn't stopped us yet. So just a little bit about the field house. I don't know how many of you have been into the field house or experienced it yet, but it is a very large asset with a lot going on inside of it. But it was really built for sports and recreation to really attract people and give them the opportunity, an asset that really didn't exist in our community until it opened in twenty nineteen, yes, right before the pandemic. And it's also built for events, and it has a professional track and field, professional track as well, which there's lots of events that happen around that, or used to happen. We're bringing them back. And there's a community center, so one of the fortunate things, we got to be part of the design, and one of the things we really knew the community needed was its own community center where we could do childcare and youth programs and have a teaching kitchen. And so there's lots of great programming happening at that facility. And of course, we have a small fitness facility so that it can be an option for members who potentially live east or Rosay or Chris Pamsys, depending on how far they wanna drive. So we like to provide those options. And I love to talk about impacts, because we do so much, and we can get lost in the everyday of what we do, but it's about why we do it. So I love the stat, where a thousand young kids get to come to the Y every year and learn how to swim. It's a basic skill that we all really need to have, so we're really proud of that. And we see over twenty thousand people coming through our fitness classes every year, so. Some cool stats for you, as you think about how busy that YMCA must be over down at the regional Y. And I wanted to give you a little snapshot, because to keep something relevant to your community, we do see some members coming to us from Chris Pamsys. And what's interesting is it's a lot of families, a lot of adults, and we do still see the need to sponsor some folks from your area. And I'll talk a little bit about what that means later, when you hear the word sponsored. And a good amount of youth, so that's great. So that's HMR. Maybe I'll just pause for a second. Do you hear me okay still?
Yes, we can. Thanks.
All right. The next area I wanna talk about is Newcomer Connections. And Newcomer Connection's been part of our Y for over twenty-five years. Started with one little classroom, a language classroom. And now we've become this multicultural organization that has end-to-end services. So as soon as a newcomer arrives in the airport, in any area, in the Greater St. John area, we're there to support them, help them find housing. We have a language school, so we work with them to learn English. We basically have a case management system, so they're with us from when they arrive until they get that job that they've been looking for, and their kids are safe in school, and that they're really thriving in our community. And so I put it really quickly, but that's basically what we do. There's so many other, there's seventy people behind this making this happen every day. So that's a little bit about our newcomers. And huge impacts here, as you can imagine. Twenty-six hundred clients served last year. We had four hundred and seven arrive throughout the pandemic, so that's low compared to where it usually is, but it's still good. They're still coming to our communities, so we're really happy about that. I think the biggest impacts, when I think about newcomers, is really connecting families to our communities, and that takes all of our volunteers. There's a lot of volunteers in this area. So if you're ever looking for a great opportunity to really help us with some of our newcomers feel part of the community, volunteering is the way to go. Language and employment, if you think about it, is huge. And just kids thriving in school, it's all part of the work that we do. And again, here's a little bit about how it looks in your community. Obviously, a lot of them settle in St. John, and it comes down to transportation and housing. So we're always working to provide other opportunities. And a big opportunity for us would be to provide some of our programming right outside, right in the Qplex, and then we may see those numbers go up. But I'm just throwing that out there. So childcare and after-school, this is a big thing for the Y, and this, at the Qplex, where we have a space, we do a full after-school program, and of course, day camp. So these are all our locations. I won't go through them all. But basically, over seven hundred kids every day at the YMCA in one of these locations learning and growing and developing, and we're so thrilled about that. And that's important. And we're in all these communities, because we really believe in adapting to the local community based on needs. And that's why we're working hard in some of these rural areas, too, to support folks who need childcare. And then, if you look at camping, about forty-five hundred every summer, so we're busy in the summer. So this is a little bit about Chris Pamsys, our after-school program. Don't get alarmed by the numbers. There's obviously trends that happen in the community that impact the way we deliver our programs or the participants that come into our programs. So you can definitely see how COVID has impacted our programs. And then, if, for instance, in twenty nineteen, the school district changed their transportation and what lines they could cross. And so that really impacted our numbers as well. But we're still going strong, and we're always looking to provide different opportunities and programs at this location. And you can tell at the bottom, we talk about the schools we serve, and Rainbows is in your community, too. And Rainbows is a free program, supported through strong communities, that helps the mental health of young people. So that's a really key program for us, that we're delivering in your community, and you might not even know it. I know that the staff, the staff team at the town do know that, so. And really, on average, four to eight percent of the children that we see are sponsored through the YMCA. That means that they financially can't afford childcare, and so we do whatever we can to remove those barriers. And over thirty percent are giving some sort of sponsorship through the government. And then day camp, similar trends happening there. Lots of kids, almost a thousand in one year, and then it just fluctuates depending on where and how we're operating our programs. And it's still a strong with COVID, so we're pretty proud of the team for making that happen. And a little bit of our partnership. So back in two thousand and five, it was before my time. I've been at the Y now fifteen years. I was probably part of the Y, but not on staff. We started operating a program, after-school program, in partnership with the town at the rec center. I don't know who was around then to remember the old rec center, but I was in it. I toured it, and a great facility. And then when you approached us to see if we wanted to be part of the Qplex, of course, we said yes, because that asset is an amazing facility. And so that's where we reside today. After ten years, we're still there, still going strong. And we just love everything that you're doing in that area, the playgrounds, the tracks, the courts. It's an amazing hub of recreation, and we just love being part of it. And hopefully, we can do more. And we have done more in the past. We have done various different types of programs, from preschool to older adult programming. And once we see our way through this pandemic, obviously, we wanna do some more of that, which I'll talk a little bit about. So annual giving, it supports those sponsored folks who can't financially afford a program, or we need to create a new program, because they need that support, such as rainbows. And so I'm happy to report that we're aiming for five twenty-five, five hundred and twenty-five thousand. This year, we're getting close. We actually overachieved our goal last year, and I know you guys wanna help us with that, and I thank you. And really, twenty-four hundred people get supported because of those funds that the Y raises. And we actually have our red triangle happening this Friday. If you haven't got your ticket, it's virtual, of course, to be safe, but it is a lot of fun. So hopefully, you can check us out and help us celebrate some really amazing people in our community. All right, Dan, here's the fun part. This is his favorite part. This is our, I just wanna talk a little bit about where we're heading for the rest of the next twelve months, I guess, our strategic plan. And really, congratulations to you. I hear that you're starting this process for a new plan for the, a new strategic plan for the town. So hopefully, if we can help and be part of anything, we would love that. But our plan gets us into, towards the end of twenty twenty-two. And as you can imagine, COVID tried to stop us, but we keep, we're like the little truck that doesn't stop, so we keep going. And in twenty twenty-two, actually, we're gonna start to develop our own new strategic plan, too. So that'll be why the questions I have at the end of the presentation. So we've put ours, we created this tagline in ours called "Driving Impact and Enriching Lives", because that's really what we wanted this plan to be about. And we wanted it to be measurable, and wanted to see that difference that we, as a YMCA, were making in the community, that we were relevant to our communities. So we put them in buckets, to keep it simple. So health is, obviously, you can imagine that makes sense. The Y is focused on health. But there's so many layers to that, so spirit, mind, and body, and how can the Y really have impact in those areas, whether it's in our healthcare system, or whether it's supporting people who are recovering from certain ailments that maybe there's nothing available for them. So that's what's really important to us, and that's all ages, of course. Enrichment, this one is all about our youth, so definitely during the pandemic, we have done a lot of work with youth, and we could hear that they needed that. And so I'm proud of the work the team has done at enriching those young people's lives, but also older adults. So we've tried a few things around older programming and new centers, and we're not done yet. The next thing, hopefully, is more intergenerational programs. Diversity, I'll talk a little bit about that later, but we really want to continue to be welcoming, but also be inclusive, which I'm sure a lot of you have learned about over the last little while. Growth, as I mentioned, we wanna go where needed. So we're always looking for opportunities either to grow our current, in our current facilities, or to grow in other ways, whether it's, you know, working with a partner on something they already own and doing more programs, or creating new spaces as well. And then awareness. That's why I'm here today. That's why Dan's here today. This is what we do. We want you to be part of it. So amplifying our voice, really talking about those impacts, so that when people need us, they know when to call upon us. And just my little plug, I guess, for diversity and social inclusion, and there's Kay. He's our facilitator. We have a staff assigned to this. Because we don't only do the work internally, and we have our focus areas, but we wanna be a leader. So we're doing our work externally as well, which we should as a charitable organization. So I just wanted you to know what's there, if there's anything you need to support in this area, although I see you're getting well-handled with the land acknowledgements. But this is an important area for our community as we continue to move forward. That's it. We just, Dan and I, and I'll let him see if he has anything else I missed, but we really wanted to hear from you, instead of always just telling you about us. We need your feedback as well, so that's important to us. And Dan?
Hi. Thanks, Shaila, and great job with the presentation, and thanks to the Chris Pam Council for inviting us to tell our story and talk a little bit about the Y. You know, I'm privileged to be a volunteer at the Y in St. John, but I'm also privileged to be a volunteer for Y Canada. I sit on the Board of Directors for Y Canada. And I wanted to mention that, because our Y is something we are very proud of, and the region should be very proud of it. And it's just an asset that, as a region, we need to leverage more. We're one of the top ten performing Ys in the country. We're the second-largest Y in Atlantic Canada, behind St. John's Newfoundland, I believe, who has more of a provincial mandate than we do. And in many ways, we're very healthy, and healthy organizations, and much like yours, have the opportunity to grow. And we feel strategically- have the opportunity to grow. And we feel uh, strategically, we feel a great need to grow our organization, but we don't, we're not growing for growth's sake. We're growing to grow our impacts. We, we know our region needs us to do this and we know every community in our region needs us to do this. Um, so that we can help those folks. Shiloh didn't mention it directly, but thirty percent of the people that use our services are sponsored one way or another. So we never turn anyone away if they can't afford to use a childcare or an after school program or be a member of our gym or use the field house. Um, or go to our overnight camp, which is, as many of you probably experienced, a life-changing opportunity for the children in our region. And so we, we, we just feel compelled and really a sense of urgency to grow the impacts that we can have on our community. And as a healthy organization, we feel like we have the capacity to continue to do that. Um, we, we were a seven million dollar organization four or five years ago and now we're, you know, without COVID, we would be a fifteen million dollar organization this year. And we're not too far from that, even with COVID and I don't say that, that doesn't really matter, the, the financial size of our organization, but the fact that we can impact the lives of over two, two thousand people and thirty percent of the people that uh, use our program and can be sponsored. And we can help with the mental health of our youth and we can engage our seniors and uh, so uh, you know, we're here tonight for a very simple reason. Uh, we want to help grow the impacts uh, in your community that are important to you, where you see a nice strategic fit. And I have to say, we're a good partner from that perspective. We're in many, many communities and we partner with many organizations. And uh, we have the strength to deliver on our commitments. And uh, so we would hope that as you do your planning and you look at us as a partner and you look at the needs of your community and various constituents within your community, that you will consider partnering with the Y to try and uh, help achieve your goals and um, I'll stop there, but uh, it's just a real pleasure to have the opportunity to tell you a little bit about us and what we do and uh, and uh, hopefully see some really, really good opportunities for us to continue to work together in much more meaningful ways than we are today. Thank you.
Thank you, Shiloh and Daniel. And certainly a, a great flyby of all of the offerings that the that the Y provides for our communities. So, so thank you for that. Uh, I will open the floor for questions. Uh, Counselor Donovan.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. Um, I just wanted to say that thank you very much to uh, Dan and uh, Shiloh for the uh, lovely presentation. It was very, it was very informative and it uh, I liked the, the specific facts of, you know, who's using it as far as, you know, QuizpamSis St. John. Um, it, it provides me a little bit more of an insight that I didn't uh, have before. And uh, I, I'm, every time I come to this council, I, I know somebody who is on the other side of the screen or the podium or uh, whatnot, but um, Mr. Doran, actually, uh, I worked with him at the Edge Startup Program. So I don't know if he remembers me, but I hope you're doing okay.
I'll, I'll order some of your candy here.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Worship. Uh, thank you very much for your presentation and I find it quite intriguing as when you talk about your strategic plan and you're actually asking us the things we do in the future, if we could keep the Y in mind, because I see what you've done in town, obviously building the new uh, building in the last, gosh, I don't know how long ago it was now, um, taking over the field house. And when I look at um, and you're, and you also said that that's the, this is the second busiest Y in Atlantic Canada behind St. John's Newfoundland, which is no small feat, especially with the uh, population variances of St. John, New Brunswick to St. John Newfoundland. So when I look at your, you actually asked us about our strategic plan, but I'm going to kind of reverse it and ask you, where do you see um, this region growing? Because I mean, when I look at where you've got the largest amount of usage, it's in the facility memberships, it's in the newcomers. So in the facility memberships, we don't have that. Um, but we are in your number three, which is about childcare and after school. So we've got that. Um, where do you see this kind of region growing and where do you see the Y expanding in our region in the next five to ten years?
Thank you, Counselor Miller.
Dan, or do you want me to go?
Yeah, I'll go first. That's a great question. Thank you. Um, well, I'd say we, we don't have an answer to that question. We're en- entering into a strategic planning process ourselves. But if you look at the opportunities as they're presenting, uh, childcare, it would be probably near the top of our list. Um, on, only because the, the Y is actually one of the uh, premier partners with the federal government. We actually worked with the federal government. Y Canada did on behalf of the thirty-nine Ys in Canada in um, as they developed their ten dollar a day childcare strategy. And so um, we're certainly top of mind from their perspective and uh, we see that as a really important uh, investment that we can make in the community to, among other things, help grow the local economy. And uh, and so we are uh, going to be players in that. We want to be uh, more proactive players in that in all the communities that we serve. And we see that as a big opportunity. Um, that being said, uh, immigration, I think, is probably the second biggest opportunity that we see in the region. We know St. John needs people. Uh, you know, I work at the university and we work really hard to bring in students who are international students and and I know the Y plays a big role in bringing in, you know, as, as you can see, five hundred to over a thousand new citizens for St. John every year. And you know, we, we help them, we meet them at the airport. And then uh, we stick with them until they, you know, get a good job and become very comfortable that they're contributing members of our society. And, and so I think that's a really important uh, role that we can play going forward. But other, outside of that is the health of our people. So uh, the physical health and the mental health. And we have an aging population and our last plan had a, had a big uh, commitment to helping aging uh, uh, aging citizens uh, in our population, seniors, and we call them older adults. Uh, and um, I, I don't think we did a very good job of that, by the way. I think there's lots more to do there. And uh, an area that I expect we're going to want to really focus on. We're doing some really neat things. We're, we're building childcare centers in seniors' homes and uh, lots of really fun stuff. And uh, uh, hopefully one will be in your community as well.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you very much for your presentation. It was very informative and I really enjoyed it. Um, you have the QuizpamSis membership base broken down percentage, but what is the number of members from QuizpamSis? Do you know that number?
Yeah, I do. That's why I like percentages better. Uh, it's, it's, it, it is a little bit low, especially because we're in COVID. So it's about a hundred and fifty uh, members.
Okay, thank you. Um, my, my next question was um, you, you touched on mental health and youth. And um, have you had any conversations with Oasis? Um, youth center here in the valley? And would there be opportunities here for partnerships um, with Oasis?
It's a really great question because we did, we, we have uh, tried to work with them in the past too, because they, they're a new, newish, I guess, o- organization. So we're always trying to help anybody in our community. But I've most recently just had a conversation with the board chair and seeing how we can help. And so we're, we're in conversations. I don't know what it looks like yet. Um, if you have ideas or you know somebody who I should be talking to, uh, please send them my way.
Thank you. Thank you.
You know, uh, if you don't mind, I, I have a comment around that. And thanks for that uh, question. Um, uh, you know, and, and I think that you know this and we know this. Uh, we, you are, you uh, execute a high level of governance in your organization. And we execute a high level of governance in our organization. We're Imagine Canada certified, which is sort of the so the gold standard for nonprofit governance in Canada. And I think that's really important. And one of the things we can bring to partnerships with organizations like Oasis is beyond helping build sustainable business models, is to build sustainable governance. And uh, that's something that we, we, we think is really important and we focus a lot of energy on it, on the board chair. So you, you're not surprised I'm saying this. Um, but uh, you know, I think that uh, uh, organizations like Oasis and other non, uh, smaller nonprofits um, have a lot to learn about governance and uh, how governance plays a role in sustainability and being able to deliver the wonderful services that they can deliver. And uh, I think there's something that we can do from that perspective, maybe together to help organizations like that in your community. Thanks for the question. That was a good one.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. I believe that is all the questions that we have, so I'm going to call for a motion. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you, Worship. I'd move that uh, Ms. uh, Boucher and uh, Mr. Doran be thanked for their presentation, uh, updating council members on the uh, many activities, uh, initiatives and programs of the YMCA of Greater St. John. Uh, acknowledging that the town has been a, a proud long-term partner of the YMCA, particularly um, with the after school and the Rainbows programs located at the Cublex. And council wishes them uh, much success in their future strategic planning efforts.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Bigger on the question. Please vote now. Motion has been carried. Thank you very much, Dan and Shiloh, for being with us this evening. Always a pleasure to speak with you and listen to what's going on at, at our local Y. Have a good evening.
Yes, you too. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Item number six is public hearings. Seeing there are none. We'll go to item number seven, minutes of the previous meetings. A is October the nineteenth, the regular meeting. Could I have a motion on that, please? Moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Luck on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. May have a motion on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, special meeting, proposed budget twenty twenty-two. It's been moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item number eight, unfinished business. We have before us uh, from July seventeenth of twenty eighteen, a dangerous and unsightly premises, four forty-six Gondola Point Road, staff report from Director of Engineering and Works and bylaw enforcement. So we'll go to the Director of Engineering, Mr. Loge.
Your Worship of Council, recall the, the unsightly premises investigations on some properties were initiated at, at approval of council earlier in the summer. Part of the process is to, to post, post the property, seek uh, a notice of compliance. Uh, we serve the, the property owner's registered mail as well as physically posting the property. Um, and we then uh, will go out and get quotes to remedy whatever issues is in front of us for the particular property at hand. The particular property on the Gondola Point Road, um, there was no response from the owners. No response from uh, our solicitor's search, uh, no response from the property being posted. Um, and uh, the uh, the nobody had made an motion or request to appeal the notice. Uh, we went out and did obtain quotes for the work to do the project, to, to demolish the building um, and haul the material away. Um, the, the lowest option was nine thousand dollars with uh, plus whatever tipping fees for construction waste. So at this stage, we're recommending to council that we proceed with um, the award of demolition uh, to uh, in accordance with the Dangerous and Unsightly Premises bylaw. The thing to remember is that uh, the costs that we incur. Um, we can make an application to the province of New Brunswick. They will then reimburse the town for our expenses associated with the prosecution under Dangerous and Unsightly and reimburse us. And then they then take on the um, the uh, the debt and apply it against the property as, as part of the tax burden on the property. So it's essentially an in and out for the municipality. Uh, the recommendation is being made at this time because normally we want to have at least thirty days to submit the invoicing to the province of New Brunswick, so they can reimburse us before year's end.
Thank you, Mr. Loge. There's a recommendation on the table. Uh, I'm going to go to Deputy Mayor Schreier.
I think Counselor Donovan had his, uh, Counselor Donovan.
Pardon me?
I think Counselor Donovan had his before.
His light wasn't flashing, yours was.
Oh, there's something not right. Yeah.
Sorry, so I'll, I'll move that motion.
Town proceed with the engaging the contractor to ren- remiate, remediate the property in accordance with the Dangerous and Unsightly bylaw number thirty-nine.
The recommendation's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier. Do we have a second here? It's been seconded by Counselor Thompson on the question. Please vote now. Oh, on the question, wait. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, through you to Mr. Loge. I'm curious as to the well. Um, when we demolish a home like that, what happens to the well? And I would, would think that it would be on sewage, but it's been there a long time, that house. I don't know if there's any chance that it is on septic. And what would happen to, I guess, both the utilities, um, the power lines going into the house, how they're all dealt with?
Through Your Worship, um, the property of some, uh, previous council members will recall is actually was part of, was, was uh, uh, impacted by fire. So there's, the, the power supply is disconnected. It's back to the main lines. The uh, the uh, past experience with demolition is that what we'll do is we'll locate and isolate the wellhead and secure it by cap, by, you know, by some type of a, of a cap. The uh, if it is a, on the sewer service, then that lateral will be located, uh, capped and, and then a marker placed so that if in the future, somebody wants to purchase a lot and construct on it, those resources go with that particular property. Um, our, our main concern for those two items is to protect against any sort of infiltration or inflow into the systems, whether it's the groundwater or the municipal sewer system. And by capping the well or by blocking the well, we can prevent it there and we secure that. The lateral is buried, so then by capping it is secured as well. So those are two items that we do look out for. And like, as I mentioned, the power's already been disconnected and brought back to the main lines because of the fire.
Thank you, Mr. Loge. Deputy Mayor. Counselor Donovan.
Uh, thank you. I have a question through you to the Director of um, Engineering. Um, so I, maybe I'm just a little bit confused. I, I'm curious as to what happens um, with a dangerous and unsightly premises. You know, when you uh, when you engage the contractor to fix up the property or tear it down or whatever, whatever it's going to happen to it. Does, it doesn't, it doesn't become property of the town. It's still the property of the original owner. Is that correct? Like, I'm just not sure how that works.
Yes, Your Worship. The, under the bylaws, the town is, was be ultimately responsible for securing the safety of the premises. In lieu of the owner taking that responsibility themselves, we would do it. But it still belongs, belongs to that particular property owner. That's, in that way, when the province sells, or when the owner sells it, there's a lien against the property. They can get that money from the property owner or the proceeds of the sale, but it is still ultimately that, that property owner's responsibility.
Thank you. Anything else, Counselor Donovan? All right, I, I believe there's a recommendation. All right. I, I believe there's a recommendation. Okay, it was moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Thompson on the question. Please vote now.
Seven zero, Your Worship, in favor?
The motion has been carried, seven zero. The next item, September one of two thousand twenty, Dangerous and Unsightly Premises, one oh six Parkside Drive. Staff report from the Director of Engineering and Works and Bylaw Enforcement. Mr. Loge, please.
Yes, Your Worship, essentially to reiterate the same process that was undertaking. This particular property is, is a little different in that it is actually an occupied dwelling where the outside premises are what is considered unsightly. The, so the order to comply is actually to clean the yard up and either repair or demolish the accessory building, the garage that's there. Previous to our notices, we had not received any communication from the owners. But when we did post, part of the process is to post the property physically. When that was done, we were then contacted by a representative of the owner who indicated that the, there are some hardship issues with the particular occupant at this stage of the game. They are trying to coordinate a neighbor or family type of effort to get the property cleaned up. There is an appeal process identified as part of the compliance process, and at this time, it's, it's being considered under that appeal. There's not been a formal appeal made to the town yet by registered mail. However, we have advised the liaison to us that we would not recommend any demolition or cleanup at this time until they have a fair opportunity to, to make their proper representation to the town. So at this stage of the game, we're recommending that the, we not proceed with any compliance at this stage. And we'll advise council when the, when they formally make appeal process to the town.
Thank you, Director of Engineering. Counselor Olson.
Thank you, Your Worship. On behalf of council, I would move to withhold any action to remediate this property until the issues surrounding current ownership status can be determined.
It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, Your Worship. So just to the Director of Engineering. So the motion is to hold off on what we would otherwise probably go ahead with, as I understand it. I mean, essentially, we're saying, as you mentioned, there's an appeals process that, I guess, at some point someone has laid claim to, or are we just sort of affording the owners, the apparent owners of the property, the, the time to consider, like, filing an appeal? Because I, I just see that this has been a problem for years. And they say that there was a tiny bit of cleanup. And then the owner indicates that a disability prevents him from doing the required work to get it cleaned up. So what's the appeal for? And the person who lives there is a caregiver, not an owner of the property, so obviously they can't file an appeal on behalf of anybody, unless they have a power of attorney over the affairs of the owner. Which I presume that's not the case, because that would be included, I would think, in the report here. So I guess, to put it very bluntly, I'm not entirely sure what we're waiting for to happen. Unless, I appreciate the compassionate aspect of it, you know, absolutely. But my heavens, it's been like five years since this has been a problem.
Your Worship, yes, we are affording the owner, the, 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 the person that we've made contact is not an occupant either. They're actually just a caregiver who shows up on a regular basis. The person living in the building is a rental, is a renter who requires the care of this particular caregiver. They are dealing with third-hand, the owner's family, who apparently either is, for personal reasons or medical reasons, cannot respond immediately. So we've, one, yes, we take into account that compassionate side. We also look at the fact that if we do not give due process to any property owner, that's when the province may or may not choose to reimburse us. So if they themselves have any questions on whether you could have, would have, should have done something, then they sort of step back. So we want to make sure that we've exhausted all reasonable avenues to provide the property owner, because as Counselor Donovan questioned just previously, this is a significant event that goes back onto the property owner and stays their responsibility. So we, we want to make sure that we're giving them all the opportunities that we can. We appreciate the fact that it is still unsightly. We've impressed upon the liaison that that's, this is the case. And they have essentially the one opportunity to bring it forward, and we want to give them that opportunity, Your Worship.
And thank you. And so when the solicitor delivered notice to this effect, there's been no reply at this date. Is that right?
No, myself, as the building, chief building inspector, posted the property with, with the assistant building inspector. The notice to comply was, was replied to, to us, to me directly. My name's on the, on all the notices to comply, so they contacted me directly, brought through the process, identified the issues at hand. I advised them of the appeal process, aware of that. They, they wanted to be able to now go through the, to make sure that the owner understands the process and then get back to me. So it, the compliance process is, is right up, has been followed and adhered to right up until they did contact me once the building was posted appropriately, so.
Counselor Bigger, is that?
Yeah, maybe you could just clarify for me then, Mr. Loge. When I read here this paragraph that says, "We recently engaged the town's solicitor, Mr. Richard McPhee, to attempt to contact the owner of this property, provide notice that we were considering proceeding with the enforcement under the town's Dangerous and Unsightly Bylaw." Mr. McPhee indicated that his correspondence was sent to the property owner with no reply. Is that preemptive to what you're saying now? Like, is that previous to, not, like, since then, subsequent to that, where there has been some communication?
The, the memo was prepared by my staff, and it appears that they took my correspondence from previous and just cut and paste it. So that is what was referred to from council when we made the initial request to have the seek to comply. So from what I can tell, the, that's, it's a repeat of what was already given to council. So since this has, since this was taken, we actually did, went to the solicitor, got the notice to comply, posted it, registered mailed it. Once it was posted, then they contacted me. So, so we're back into the proper chain of events that's there at that appeal process. So this was a previous background document from council.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item number C, June fifteenth of twenty-one, Nominating Committee Recommendations to Appoint Active Transportation Working Group Ad-Hoc Committee. Looking for a motion? Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, Your Worship. I've moved that council accept the nominating committee's recommendation that the mandated scope of the Active Transportation Working Group Ad-Hoc Committee be broadened to include all components of active transportation and that their task be to provide recommendations to the new master transportation plan processed by April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. And further, that council accept the nominating committee's recommendation to appoint the following individuals to the new Active Transportation Working Group Ad-Hoc Committee. Counselor Kerry Luck, Wayne Aerosmith, Daryl Steves, Margie Le, Margie Leclerc, and Gary Loge. Oh, excuse me. Pardon me. That's a very small little scrolling window there. Dana Burton Dixon, of course, our wonderful Director of Community Services.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. Item number D, Town Acquispam Sis Proposed Budget. Do we do each of these individually or the entirety? Item number one, Proposed Two Thousand Twenty-Two General Fund Budget Highlights. Counselor Miller, Finance Committee Chair. Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Your Worship. The Two Thousand Twenty-Two General Fund Budget Highlights. The Two Thousand Twenty-Two Tax Rate will decrease by two point six five cents to one dollar thirty, thirty-one sixty-three per one hundred dollars of assessment. The tax base for Quispam Sis is now two point oh one nine billion, which represents a nine point zero six percent increase of one hundred and sixty-seven point seven million from the two thousand twenty-one tax base. The community funding and equalization grant will increase to one hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars. This is an increase of a one hundred and sixty-two dollars over the amount received last year. This increase is only related to the core funding portion of the grant, as we do not receive any equalization funding. The total budget of twenty-eight million two hundred and five thousand five one nine reflects an increase of total expenditures of one point eight five zero five one two. The net budget or total property tax revenue will increase by one million seven hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars or six point nine one percent over two thousand twenty-one and is comprised of the following. Increase expenses from internal sources is one hundred and ninety thousand dollars five sixty-eight. Added increased expenditures from external sources is two hundred and ninety-nine thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars. Less increase of other revenue of negative one hundred and thirty-three thousand and fifty-five dollars. Less the increase of provincial grant revenue of one hundred and sixty-two dollars. And then add in the increase of capital projects funded by our operating budget of one million three hundred and sixty thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So this would require an increase of property tax revenue of one million seven hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars. Residential garbage, compost pickup and curbside recycling is included in the budget at a total cost of one million one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. An increase of eighty-two thousand and ninety-five dollars. Tipping fees account for nearly half of the increase, but also this is the first increase in solid waste tipping fees since two thousand and three. The average cost per household is one hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-seven cents. And the average cost per household before it was included in our town budget back in two thousand sixteen was three hundred and nine dollars and ninety-six cents. So there's still a savings of one hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-nine cents per household this year. Our debt servicing cost is now at six point eight five percent. This is the total debt cost as a percentage of our total budget. There is anticipated borrowing of one hun, one million nine hundred and fifty-six thousand this year. The borrowing one million three hundred and fifty-six thousand is for Fire Station Number Two renovations here in Quispam Sis and, and six hundred thousand dollars for street capital. The majority of our user fees, such as ice rental, fields and facilities, have increased by three percent. Included in the operating budget are contributions totaling three hundred and nine, three hundred and seventy-one thousand two seventy-nine to the general capital reserve and a one-time withdrawal of seventy-four thousand five hundred from the general operating reserve as well. The withdrawal is for the carryforward of two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one projects that were unable to be completed. So the net, in fact, of the increase to reserves is two hundred and ninety-six thousand seven seventy-nine. Capital expenditures are budgeted at six point one two six nine two million and are funded from the general operating fund budget of two million six hundred and nine thousand and sixty-four dollars and the Canada Community Building Funds at, excuse me, nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-four. Borrowing of one point nine five six million and reserve funding of five hundred and seventy-eight thousand two sixty-four. Full details of our capital plan are included in our budget, budget package along with all the years, along with years twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six projections. Kennebec Heights Regional Police and KV Fire Department are shared between Quispam Sis and Rossay at approximately a sixty-forty split. The total town contributions to these protective services is eight point zero zero four million. This is an increase of three hundred and nine thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars over two thousand twenty-one and includes seventy-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-four related to borrowing for renovations on Fire Station Number Two. This, the increase is related to the increased cost for police and fire as lower capital expenditures for two thousand twenty-two due to a debenture for borrowing instead of being funded via the operating budget. Kennebec Heights Public Library operating budget is shared between Quispam Sis and Rossay based on population with an annual adjustment for an estimated population increase. The Quispam Sis for two thousand twenty-two is sixty-one point one percent for the total cost of one hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars, which includes the capital adjustments paid to Rossay due to the percentage change over time. Our public transit or COMEX budget is now at ninety-five thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars. It's a decrease of seventy thousand, seventy-seven eight thirty-four from two thousand twenty-one. The St. John Transit portion has decreased by seventy-six thousand eight thirty-four due to the merging of Route fifty-two and fifty-three and sharing one bus with the town of Rossay. Maintenance costs are also down by a thousand dollars. In two thousand twenty, council voted to support the creation of a new regional economic development agreement for Greater St. John and committed to a five-year annual contribution starting in two thousand twenty-one, Envision St. John. The Regional Growth Agency started operations in two thousand twenty-one, and our share for this budget for two thousand twenty-two is two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. For regional facilities, our share for this legislative commitment to the following facilities in St. John's, St. John is now seventeen point three, three seven percent. TD Station is one hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. Trading Convention Center, sixty-eight thousand eight ninety-three. Imperial Theater, eighty-six thousand six eighty-seven. Aquatic Center, one hundred and eighteen thousand three sixty-four. St. John Arch Center, fifty thousand two, two eighty-two. Quispam Sis' total share of regional facilities is four hundred and seventy-nine thousand two oh seven. This is total of fifty-three thousand dollars, forty-six decrease from last year. A combined share of the regional facilities in Vision St. John Regional Growth Agency budgets totals six hundred and ninety-eight thousand two hundred and seven dollars. Since amalgamation in, since amalgamation nineteen ninety-eight, Quispam Sis has provided more than eleven point one million to these organizations located in St. John. Our share of Region Nine Regional Service Commission costs, based on our priorita share of tax base plus population, is seven thousand six hundred and two dollars, which is an increase of two dollars from two thousand and one. Grants for sponsorship for community organizations total twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and include the following. Seven thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars for pro kids, one thousand dollars for St. John Under Eighteen Vitos, five hundred dollars for International Women's Day, one thousand dollars to the KV Food Bank, three hundred dollars to Hammond River Angling Association, three hundred dollars for Junior Achievement, seventy-five hundred dollars for KV Oasis Youth Center, five hundred dollars for St. John Theater Company, five thousand dollars for the St. John Regional Hospital Foundation, one thousand dollars for the YMCA of Greater St. John, eighteen seventy-five for Crime Stoppers, which will be an in-kind donation, and eighteen hundred and fifty dollars for various other donations and support. So I would resolve that the sum of twenty-eight million two hundred and five thousand five nineteen be the total operating budget of the municipality. Sorry, of municipality, that the sum of twenty-six million five hundred and seventy-one two sixty-three be the warrant for the municipality for the ensuing year and that the tax rate for the municipality be one point three one six three. The council orders and directs the levying by the Minister of Environment and Local Government of set amount on real property liable taxation under the Assessment Act within the municipality of Quispam Sis.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. It's been moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question. We have a question. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to thank Counselor Miller. I don't think I could have read that any better myself. But I do have a question for him, and it's not a big question. I'm just a little bit confused is all. Where it's the second, the, the third highlight, excuse me, on the general fund budget highlights, it says the community funding and equalization grant will be increased to one hundred, one hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars, an increase of one hundred and sixty-two dollars over the amount received last year. It says this increase is only related to the core funding portion of the grant, as we do not receive any equalization funding. I don't understand, like, are we giving, are we giving somebody one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars? Or like, are we receiving a hundred? Like, I'm, I'm just not sure how that works.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. I'll have Counselor Miller answer your question.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you for the question. And if I, if I make a misstep, we've got our Krista here to help me out. So, so basically, the way that the province does it is they've got two sets of grants that they, they give to each municipality. And the first one's a core funding grant, which is based on primarily your, your population. So every year, it varies slightly. And then they have fifty-three million dollars that they give in equalization grants. Historically, Quispam Sis, Rossay and Riverview would share
Historically, Quispam Sis, Rossay and Riverview would share $2.3 million. Well, I say share, but Quispam got zero, Rossay got zero and Riverview got 2.3. So the, the portion that I talked about this time was in that core grant. So that core grant goes up marginally based on your population from what I understand. So that's why it only went up that, that amount. Our, our, the second part of the grant is the equalization. And like I said, historically it was shared and, and this year, which we brought up during our meeting on Saturday, Riverview actually had a decrease of 1.1 million, but it did not flow to Rossay or Quispam. I'm not sure where it went. And this was the year that Quispam Sis actually had the lowest growth rate of the three communities. So this is the year that the, that formula would have benefited us, but yeah, hopefully that helps.
Thank you, Councilor Miller. Councilor Donovan, are you good with that? Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you to the staff for all your hard work and on, on the budget. I know there's been many months of bringing, preparing this and thank you to the Finance Committee and for us being able to sit down and bring it all together. I just have an observation that I wanted to comment on and it has to do with the right to information. That's the budget for that. I would like to see us to start to track that in a separate budget line so we know what the, the dollars amount are that we are spending on right to information. And my second question is, is can we start tracking dollars for cybersecurity? I'm very concerned about the cybersecurity and as we move forward, protecting the town on those two issues. So nothing on the general budget. I'm, I'm happy with the budget. But these are just a couple of comments that I wanted to see if we could incorporate those somehow. So at least we have a baseline that we can get to, or maybe it exists already and I just. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. We will go to the treasurer, Ms. Brandon.
So through your worship to Deputy Mayor Schreier. So the request for information, so all of those requests filter through the clerk's office. So I know that they do track how long it does take them and the amount of time based on the amount of information. So we can take that as a, as an item to kind of look to for the future. As far as cybersecurity goes, so we definitely do track the cost for that. We now do have cybersecurity insurance as well that is set up in its own GL account that we track that. And the rest of it would be through our IT Support GL. We'd be able to pull that information at any point in time.
Thank you, Ms. Brandon. Deputy Mayor, did you have another question? No, your light's flash. Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion moved by Councilor Miller, seconded by Councilor Donovan on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item number two. Oh, sorry. Item number one. 1.2. General capital budget approval. Staff report from the town treasurer.
As the staff report indicates, this is just our balancing piece for our capital. Puts in all of our capital expenditures as well as our sources of funding.
We are looking for a motion. Moved by Councilor Miller, seconded by Councilor Olson on the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. Item number two. 8.2. Proposed 2022 utility fund budget highlights, Councilor Miller, Finance Committee. Councilor Miller.
Thank you, your worship. Here are the highlights of our 2022 utility fund budget. Sewer user rates will increase by $15 or 2.98% to $518 per equivalent unit per year. The water user fee fixed charge component on all meter sizes will increase by approximately 2.88% for most residential homes with a basic meter size. This means a change from $243 to $250 annually. The water user fee consumption charge component will also increase, will have a 3% increase. User for the first 96 cubic meters per quarter will increase from 0.9902 to $1.0199 for the rate in excess of 96 cubic meters per quarter will increase from $1.5681 to $1.6151. Larger meters having a higher usage threshold for the two rates. Utility capital expenditures, the total utility capital fund budget is $2,922,000. This includes utility capital, $200,000 for an additional funding for a new utility building, $145,000 for a hoist truck, $65,000 for utility technician van, sanitary sewer, $30,000 for SCADA subsystem upgrades, $1.730 million for Goodola Point wastewater pumping stations upgrade phase number two, $15,000 for the lagoon aerator replacement. And under water capital, we have $150,000 for additional funding for our water tower rehabilitation, $37,000 for Millennium Drive items, VDF and SCADA updates, $550,000 for water line on Old Coach Road from Hampton Road to Heavy Road. The funding sources are 1.98 million from Canada Community Building Fund, formerly known as the Gas Tax, $376,000 from the Utility Capital Reserve Fund and $566,000 from the Utility Operating Fund. As our asset management plan indicates, we need to put funds aside now to ensure that we have money available when we need to replace and maintain our infrastructure as it ages. This budget also includes a transfer to reserves of $329,490 for this purpose. As we work towards having an approved long-term financial plan, this amount will likely need to increase to ensure we have fully funded utility plan. With that, I would resolve that pursuant to paragraph 1174 of the Local Governance Act, the total budget for the Town of Quispam Sis Water and Wastewater Disposal Utility for the ensuing year would consist of total revenues of $3.649047 and total expenditures of $3,649047.
Thank you, Councilor Miller. It's been moved by Councilor Miller, seconded by Councilor Olson on the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. Motion. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. Item number two. 2022 utility capital budget approval. Staff report from town treasurer. You have a motion in front of you, resolution? Would you like to speak to that? Councilor Miller.
I'd resolve the council of the Town of Quispam Sis accept the 2022 utility capital fund budget as presented in a total of $2,922,000 in capital expenditures.
Thank you, Councilor Miller. It's been moved by Councilor Miller, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item number nine, correspondence. We have a proposed appointment of Councilor Emma Olson as Employer Representative of New Brunswick Municipal Employees Pension Plan Board. Do I have a motion on that, please? Councilor Bigger.
Thank you, your worship. I would move the council accept the nominated committee's recommendation from their meeting of November 2nd, 2021 to appoint Councilor Emma Olson as the Town of Quispam Sis' employer representative on the NB Municipal Employees Pension Plan Committee for a four-year term in response to correspondence from Brendan Knight, Secretary Treasurer of the MBMEPP.
It's been moved by Councilor Bigger, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier. On the question. Seeing there, oh, Councilor Donovan.
Thank you, your worship. I don't disagree. I'm just, I just have a question. As far as the, I, I read the pension committee memo and it says that they, they're looking for the employer representatives to be chosen prior to October 20th. We've obviously missed that deadline. I'm just wondering if that affects us anyhow.
Thank you for the question, Councilor Donovan. Yes, we've been in correspondence with the Secretary Treasurer of the Pension Board and this is going to fit into their, their next meeting. Thank you. On the question, please vote. Motion carried, seven zero. Item number 10, bylaws. Proposed amendment number 05-21, a bylaw of the municipality of Quispam Sis regarding respecting sewage utility. Town Treasurer, Krista Brandon.
Yep, through, through your worship, I just, for the benefit of new counselors as well. So as we go through the budget process and we adjust our rates, our bylaws need to change. So that is what's in front of you. Just wanted.
Thank you for that explanation. Councilor Thompson.
I move a first reading of the proposed amendment number 05-21, a bylaw of the municipality of Quispam Sis respecting sewage utility.
First reading has been moved by Councilor Thompson. It's been seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. Deputy Mayor Schreier, did you? Okay, thank you. On the question, there are none. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. There's a second part to that motion. If we could have somebody, Councilor Thompson.
Yes, your worship. I move a second reading to the same bylaw.
Second reading has been moved by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. There are none. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. Item number B. Proposed amendment number 024-17, a bylaw of the municipality of Quispam Sis respecting water utility. Councilor Donovan.
Thank you. I would move first reading, reading be given to bylaw number 024-17, a bylaw of the municipality of Quispam Sis respecting water utility.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilor Donovan, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. There's a second part to that. Councilor Donovan.
Thank you. I'd like to move the second part of that bylaw.
It's been moved by Councilor Donovan, second reading, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. There are none. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. Down to item number 11, new business. Don't believe there is any. Item number 12, reports. Councilor Luck.
Thank you, your worship. I just have a question about one of the reports that was received on the 26th of October from the Alzheimer's Society of New Brunswick. They were asking council to take part in a fundraiser. It's just, just a small fundraiser where they're offering a small initiative around World Kindness Day and they're asking council if they could purchase a collection of their flowered socks with their forget-me-not theme for $15. And I'm not sure, I guess I'm just going to put that out there. I personally would like to do this initiative. I'm not sure if other counselors would join me in that, but I think it's a great initiative, especially knowing how widespread Alzheimer's is and our community is getting older. So I just would put that out there, but I, I would like to have information on where I can buy the socks and I will wear them proudly. So thank you.
Okay, I'm with you on that. Okay, we have a couple of questions here. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Well, thank you, your worship. I too wanted to comment on it and thank them for their correspondence. And I thought it was a great initiative like Councilor Luck does and I fully support it. We can buy some fancy socks and try to remember where we left our socks in the dryer or if there's one on the wall or. But I would love to participate in that initiative. I think it's great.
I think they're going to have a, a few supporters here. Councilor Olson.
Thank you, your worship. I too would like two or three pair and I'll wear them proudly. It's a great cause. And Kathleen Bellavou lives over in Stony Croft subdivision. So I'm sure that she could address our questions about how to pick them up. So I'm very supportive and will be making some purchases.
Thank you, Councilor Olson. Councilor Bigger.
Thank you, your worship. Count me in. I, although I could perhaps borrow some from Councilor Olson if he's buying a few pair, but.
We'll make sure your feet are covered.
We'll leave the hygiene implications of that out maybe. Okay, this is a wonderful initiative and I'm really proud to see everyone around the horseshoe so, also so supportive of this. I think this is great. So wonderful.
And the clerk will put an order in and let them know that we want a, a variety of, I think there were, I counted five different styles that they have. So they're, they're very nice and I'm sure they'll be cozy this time of year. And I'm going to go to next in queue, which is Councilor Olson. No?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. It's, sorry.
Councilor Olson, did you? You're on.
Oh, I'm okay.
Okay. Councilor Miller.
Thank you, your worship. Just like everybody else has said, I was just wondering for, for, for the socks, if you could just send an email out to us and then we can just do, do an email order. That way we don't have a box here and stuff like that with all the COVID protocols. So that'd be great. Or somebody send an email, not.
The, the clerk will look after all of us, I'm sure. She has just told me that she is going to give them a call, do the order and we'll all be notified. Sound good? All right. Councilor Olson.
Thank you, your worship. I'd just like to say that I'm pleased to, to see the high school hockey tournament coming back to the Cubplex after an absence because of COVID. And I know that our Director of Community Services is a big supporter of that, as we all are. And it's nice to see. I might even take in some games myself. It's good to see the girls playing hockey.
Thank you for that, Councilor Olson. I'm sure they appreciate that endorsement. Councilor Donovan.
Thank you, your worship. And just as we have done, you know, in previous council meetings with the various awareness months such as, you know, dyslexia and, and some of the other causes, I just wanted to note that in this reports package, there is a, a report that says that November is Crohn's and colitis Awareness Month. So I just wanted to pass that along. uh, Awareness Month. So, um, I just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. I'm looking for a motion on the reports, please. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Motion to receive and file, your worship.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Donovan, that the reports be received and filed. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried, seven-zero. Business arising from committee of the whole. There is none. I'm looking for an adjournment. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question. There is none. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven-zero. As always, I hope you find joy in the rest of your evening and in the days coming. Have a good evening, everyone.